The Monday, July 1st, 2024 Inkster City Council Meeting is now called to order. Everyone, please stand for our prayer. Pastor Ogle.
Father, we thank you this evening for your amazing grace and love. We thank you for this great city, Lord. We thank you for those that are here to serve. We thank you for the heart, the understanding that they have to be excellent. And we thank you, Lord God, as we look around at our country today in this time where decisions are made at the highest level that makes absolutely no sense. I thank you for a council that understands consequences and as they work and lead that they are the example that we need in the city of Inkster. There is never a time where the voices of many cannot have strength. So I ask you that Inkster becomes the leader in Wayne County and that there is nothing that we cannot do working together. And we stand in prayer and in faith that those that are in leadership at the top level of this country will begin to recognize who we are because of what we will stand for. We will not be overlooked. We will not be taken advantage of. And we will use our collective voices to vote in those that will represent us and represent us well. I thank you for that in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I proudly certify the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Chisholm.
President.
Councilwoman Rutledge. Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Scott. Councilwoman Howard. Councilwoman Richardson. Here you have a call.
By the way, let's look at the agenda. We want to add I am I, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Right in our public comment box. Oh, sorry, H, I'm sorry. H. We got A through H. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move.
Probably move the second discussion. All those who care to say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Presentation. Pastor Sykes. You left? Okay. The presentation is about the third annual Don't Engage Road Rage 5K Run-Walk. We will be discussing as one of our business items. We'll get some additional information on that. Public, no public hearings tonight. We have a motion to approve. It's the Senator.
I move.
Second. Probably move the second discussion. All those who care to say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Notice that Senator Dana Polhanki came in. How you doing? And do you have any comments or words for us tonight? Come on up. See, she brought a check with her. It's always a good thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Nolan, Mayor Pro Tem Chisholm, city council members. I'm so pleased to be here. My name's Dana Polhanki and I am your state senator. I represent part of La Bona, all of Canton, all of Westland, all of Garden City, and all of Inkster. And I think I saw some of you at our big check burning ceremony when we burned the dissolved Inkster school debt. And I certainly do hope, if you haven't seen it yet on your tax bill, you were paying 13 mils in taxes for a school, for 10 years for a school district that does not exist. So that should be way down. I hope that you're starting to see that. And I have some more good news. And I do have to get out some notes here because I just got this information today. This is how the budget works. My mayors, my county supervisors say it's budget season. What can you get from me? So Mayor Nolan had a big ask for lots of repairs for Dozier. Now, last year, you know, the Inkster school debt you guys got was 12.2 million, I think. Last year was a windfall for everybody because we had that COVID federal stimulus money and there was $9 billion to be spent on different projects. And we did a good job. We spent some money. We also got you the 1.2 million, I think, for the historical cultural center. So this year was not as much of a, you know, we had the right size. But what I want to point out, I did get you, here's the reveal, you're going to get your Dozier roof repaired at 900,000. I'm like, I know how to fix them though, but. And then there is something called the three-part formula. I was an English teacher, so I have no idea how that works. But there is a three-part formula in revenue sharing and Inkster made out like bandits. Let me just talk about this a little bit. There's something called non-constitutional or discretionary revenue sharing. Now, in fiscal year 24, you guys got 1.7 million for that. In fiscal year 25, it's 3.4 million. That's an increase of 1.72 million or a 99.9% increase. No, tiny bit of, like, not as great news. But trust me, it's overall good. The constitutional revenue sharing fiscal year 24, you guys had 2.8 million dollars. Fiscal year 25 is 2.7 million dollars. So there's a decrease of only 45,000 dollars. So it's only a .16 decrease. So here's the overall number you get to remember. Revenue sharing for Inkster is going to increase 1,656,667 dollars. That's a 36.5% increase. So if I added it up, right, 1.6 million plus 900,000, I think it's 2.5 million.
That's the best case we got all year. Just to add to what Senator Polhanki, I want to thank Senator John Cherry. A lot of you remember his father was a lieutenant governor, same name. He was the one who spearheaded this from the Senate and wanted to take care of cities like Inkster and Triantic Cities who've been getting cheated over the years. And he changed the whole formula. We received the second biggest increase in the state of Michigan. It was a heavy lift. He got it done along with our political consultants. They were working. Of course, I got on board. Soon as I heard it, I couldn't believe what he was saying. So I started making phone calls, started neighboring cities to make sure their state reps supported this. And, you know, everybody, just about every city seems to do a little bit better now with the revenue sharing. So it's a big deal because this is every year. So this is a big deal. All right, we're going to move boards and commissions. I would like to nominate Barbara Cooper for the Naked Transit Commission. So move as a chair. We probably move and support it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Okay. We need to reestablish our condemnation board and construction board. They'll serve together. So you'll be serving on two boards if you're on either one of them. So we need folks who know a little bit about real estate, construction, building, carpentry, anything. We need some expertise on those boards so we can start cleaning up our city with respect to these buildings that are nuisances, dangerous. We have to, we have to act as a board to move, go after them. We have no members on either one right now. So we need, Glenn, okay. You're in too? Okay, cool. So we got two volunteers. So pass the word along because by next meeting, we want to try to appoint the entire board if we get enough. Condemnation and Construction Board.
It says five minutes. It says five minutes.
Okay, that's good. Usually the building officials usually.
Building architect, general member, gentleman, hat track engineer.
We got any engineers out there in Inkster? Let's find some. We have some. They just hide. We just got to pull them out there. Any other appointments aboard the commission? We have no ordinance readings tonight. We're moving on to new business.
Consider approval, don't engage in road rage awareness, 5K walk and run 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. August 10th, 2024, and the route is attached.
Second. Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Consider approval of street closure block party July 20th, 24 at 26858 Florence Street, Cross Streets, and Sylvia and Princess. Time of event 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.
We probably move to support discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Consider approval of block party on 7424 Adjoys, 3155 Hickory, Cross Streets, Hickory and Cherry. Time of event 3 p.m. to 10 p.m.
Probably move to support it. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Consider approval of the recycle bin contract with Midwest Recycling.
Then move the second discussion. Did find out some additional information. The contract, we get paid quarterly for the contract. We should have a payment coming out, payment process now for Midwest Recycling. Anything more? Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Consider approval to retain occupational safety consulting company, Archangel Safety LLC, for 8,000 to partner with Human Resources Director to develop and implement an occupational safety program in adherence with Miosha standards and regulations.
Probably move to support it. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Consider approval to purchase one vacated public alley converted into a public easement parcelcase, LD 24-33. The vacated alley is located by Pine Street to the north, Annapolis to the south, Harriet to the west, Harrison to the east, and Barters Lots 901 through 914 of Dearborn Acres, Sub Number Two, behind Canterbury Estates for 2,250, 2,250.
Probably move to support it. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Consider approval to sale of military vehicle selling for 5,000 dollars.
Probably move the second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Item H, public comment policy.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we make a policy in order to make a public comment for all public meetings within the city of Inkster. A person has to be in person at that meeting effective immediately.
And probably move the second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ugly dissipation. Y'all, notice our new clock. So don't act like you don't know when your three minutes is up. You just look right there. If you go beyond 10 seconds after three minutes, the sandman will come get you. Anybody got a cane out there? Yeah, yeah, we good, we good. So anybody goes over three minutes, just hook them. Dr. Phyllis Long.
Good evening to the Inkster residents, to the Inkster City Council, to our mayor, Mayor Nolan.
Sorry, Charlie.
A free community lupus awareness event. Join us for a journey with lupus open house, fun games and prizes, Saturday, July 13th, 2024, 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Inkster Park Lower Ridge Parkway, just north of Michigan Avenue. Let's have fun learning more about lupus. Light refreshments will be served as supplies last. So we're still an infant organization. So come, we would be so honored for the Inkster residents and for any other Inkster city councils to come and just join us, just meet us. We'd love that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's July 13th, from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. Knock it. Can I have some flyers over there?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I want to keep this momentum going with us accepting the check from the Senator and being selected. I just want to let everybody know with the help of Chief Jenkins, this was actually her project with the Michigan State Police. Inkster was the only city that they chosen in Wayne County to partner with. They're doing a trooper's own tour where they'll be visiting different cities. And Inkster is the only city in Wayne County that they have chosen. That event will be Sunday, July 14th, from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. That is located at the Inkster Police Department's mini station, which is at 43 TM Middle Belt. This event is all free and Michigan State Police is funding the entire thing. It will be free food, music, game, prizes, bounce houses, a rock climbing wall, and so much more. So it will be nice to see all of the city to come out as we were selected by the Michigan State Police to partner for this event. Also, the Inkster Police Department's event, July events are over there on the table. So if anybody want to know all the events that we're doing for the month of July, just stop by the table and grab them. And I'm sorry, our summer camp does start on Monday, this Monday, July 8th. We're so excited. We have partnered with Gleaners to get the food. We've had T-shirt donations. His name is Print Ninja. He will be supplying all the T-shirts for the summer camp. And so this is just exciting for Inkster. Summer Camp is going to be at the Booker T. Dozier Center, Monday through Thursday from 10 to 3.
Adrian Scruggs. She gonna pop.
Do I need to push a button? Okay, there we go. Give you like an extra two seconds and we're on. Good evening, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Nolan, Mayor Pro Tem Chisholm, city council persons, everybody here. My name is Adrian Scruggs and I am running for Wayne County Circuit Court Judge. I've been an attorney for almost 20 years now and I've gone from having my private practice where I was advocating for my clients in areas of criminal, civil, family, and probate laws, spent a lot of time down at 36 District Court, representing indigent defendants, to where I am now serving as a judicial officer, as a family law referee at the Washtenaw County Trial Court. I have tremendous experience. I'm exceedingly qualified and I'm the only candidate on the ballot who actually has the experience of serving as a judicial officer. I've been fortunate to not only be endorsed by UAW Region 1, Region 1A, Metro Detroit AFL-CIO, my union, which is ASME, and also Honorable Mayor Nolan here, as well as Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Chisholm. But I ask for your prayers first and your votes second, and in that order. I am on the August primary ballot, so please, when you see the ballot, pray for me and then vote Scruggs for judge.
Keep looking. Shawna Butts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
My name is Shawna Butts. I sit on the Board of Parks and Recreation, but today I feel like I need to come before as a private citizen as well as commissioner. We've been having some issues at the recreation center with safety. We've had some gang members that reported some videos and put them on social media. We've had parents fighting. We've had drugs and alcohol being utilized inside of the premises when the children are present. And I've had a chance to speak with the director and we're all in the same boat. We say that we need to have some things like cameras, maybe some walkie-talkies, something that can be communicated throughout the building, like if there's a situation that is immediate danger. I did have a chance to speak with the chief today. She did let me know that we can try and make a walkie-talkie implemented as soon as possible. Maybe next week we can get those. But we need to look at cameras. We need to look at metal detectors. We need to look at several other options that we can have so that our children, our seniors, and our community feel safe. The recreation should be a safe haven. You should go there and have no issue with believing that you're going to be unsafe, especially in the climate that we have today where we have a lot of gun violence and other types of violence going. But I just want to make sure that we're on the record that we need some safety and security at the recreation center. We did as soon as possible and we need to get it from wherever we can. Thank you.
Pastor Jean Ogle.
Because just like what the police department said, so many amazing things, starting with Dana and the money coming, that's really elevating and lifting the city of Inkster. I'm just so excited for the direction that we are moving and how blessed and favored we are. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and all of the wonderful people that work, serve, love, and live in the city of Inkster. I have amazing news. I was on the Tom Jerner cruise and I begged Ted Ellis to come to Inkster. Ted Ellis, the renowned artist that did Barack Obama, everything that John Lewis built, who's over the White House, will be here August the 23rd and 24th. Operation Refuge will have our biggest fundraiser to date. We will have VIP on that Friday night. But Saturday, we're having VIP for Inkster. Our residents will have a special opportunity to be with Ted Ellis. He wants to do something special with our children and leave some legacy right here in the city of Inkster. So I had to share that. And I think I still have minutes left. So thank you. Thank you so much. So that's the news. Save the date, guys. You'll get more information. You'll be able to register. You'll be able to do everything. So yay, Inkster.
Cassie Jones McBride.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I am Cassie Jones McBride. I'm the founder, executive director of the International Full Woman Network. And my goal in Inkster is to make sure that the people here have what they need to understand the new voting laws, be acclimated in the new voting suppression that's happening across the state. And to combat that, I'm offering my services again to Clerk Holiday. I want to thank you for your dedication to changing the tone and tenor of what happens on Election Day. And also just to applaud you for the way that you were very supportive in the ways in which people need to have access to what they need it and also the information that you have. I know you hear it a lot, but I think the city was ready for just a lot of powerful leadership. And that goes to all the new city council members as well. And I know that everyone here is very interested in making sure that we have what we need to thrive. And I specialize in making sure that my people get what they need. And I know that we don't get it by either, mostly by design. But I want to make sure that I bring the resources back to Inkster. So I hire people within the city of Inkster to do poll monitoring. I held the first poll monitoring poll worker recruitment fair in Inkster. I've partnered with a lot of Black-led progressive organizations within the state to make sure that I have the support that we need for door knocking or phone banking or text banking, whatever we need to make sure that we are successful in this new election cycle. So I'm just offering my services to new Clerk Holiday, city council, and also to the city of Inkster. Thank you.
Acia Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Inkster residents. Just wanted to come up with a few announcements. First of all, everyone should know now that the Inkster Task Force Farmers Market is open and live every Wednesday at the amphitheater. We want you guys to come down and support. I'm telling y'all, every Wednesday I get me like a bushel of greens and I cook those greens. I have greens every week and they are just delicious. So come and support. So every Wednesday, 4 to 7 at the amphitheater. And also the Inkster Chamber of Commerce. This year, we celebrating 60 years in Inkster. This is our 60th birthday, Inkster. So the city of, the Chamber of Commerce and we are definitely, because it's the city of Inkster, are celebrating with the 60th birthday party celebration. It will be on Saturday, November the 2nd, and we will be using our Bliss Event Center so that people who are, have some type of disability won't have no issue walking in the door or having to get on a wheelchair and get on flights and stairs. So please, I have tickets for that, everyone. I count like 45 people in here besides the young man. So I got, you know, tickets left for everybody to buy a ticket tonight. So just know that we are doing that. As the young lady just said, get out to vote. We have to make sure that our people know that we are getting ready to have a primary next month. And we need to make sure that we are getting these folks out. Bring somebody to the poll with you, whatever you got to do to get the people out for primaries. Bring somebody to the poll with you, whatever you gotta do to get the people out for primaries. And last but not least, just be good, be great, because that's who we are. Pink, and I'm about to say Israel, thinking about church, but Inkster, you know, be good and be great, because that's who we are and I thank you.
Gabe Henderson.
I got a following, you know, I think that Agent Owen, he got my brain a little mixed up. Okay, what I'm saying, saying that the dumpster situation, you know, dumpster didn't come out this weekend. A lot of people were expecting it to happen. In fact, we could all that, yeah, they didn't come out, but I had told everybody this weekend, so they. But, you know, I want to apologize for people who probably came up, you know, for the dumpster. But I, we were still up there, had trash bags, you know, the silent sheet, all that, okay? And I want to apologize, yeah, especially to you young lady, you know, because I told you. And I got like Dr. Young, don't even look like Dr. Young right there. I had to say that. I could, sir, how you doing, sir? We had that one, I said, the nation, Dr. Young, you know, just, you know, you know. That's all I had to say. And okay, and so it should be the last Saturday of this month for the dumpster and all of it. Can't hear me, I'm sorry. I said the dumpster should be coming out this last Saturday, this month, and all the way to October, you know. Sometime when there's a change, when there's a holiday, you know, they change it up and I got mixed up on that. But anyway, love y'all. Okay, thank you. I apologize for that mix up. Okay.
Public comment from Mr. Charles Blackwell. Good evening. The public should be aware that Felicia Rutledge and Stephen Chisholm have both accepted campaign money from A. Hatchum and Midwest Recycling. Lastly, Mayor Byron Henry Nolan is engaging in the same tricks at Inkster City Hall that Mayor Wimberly was doing.
You shouldn't be using my middle name like that. Oh, man. All right. Okay, let's see. So we got Madam Clerk, you have any comments?
Um.
Oh, oh, you did? I'm sorry. Miss, come on up. They probably tell you you're supposed to fill out one of these.
I did.
Oh, you did? Wait a minute.
Did. Antoine Shaw.
Well, we lost.
Troy passed it up. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, distinguished civil servants of Inkster. My name is Antoine Shaw. I'm the owner of Big Dog Hot Dog Street Grill, right at the corner of Cherry Hill and. Father, talking about Inkster love. I grew up in Inkster all my life. All the way from I was born. And it's number love always in Inkster. And it gets me choked up. I did, I do events all over the city, Detroit, downtown Detroit, Novi, all over, the Grand Prix, the Jazz Fest. But it's no place like home. No place like home. And so I'm inviting the mayor, the council, my favorite, to the Cherry Hill Plaza this Saturday. I'm doing a customer appreciation celebration this Saturday from one to six, all my Inkster people. And I got a flagship coming, that's all I'm saying. It's a flagship coming and I think you're going to enjoy it and be happy and proud of it. So it's just Saturday from one to six. And I thank the mayor and the council members that have visited and eaten with me and have supported us. I appreciate it. And that's what we do. So that's what I'm here to say and invite you and to thank Inkster for all the support for over six years now. And also, we did our first annual Big Dog Movie Night at the amphitheater last year. It was on the down low because we wanted to kind of make sure everything is right. So we second, we're planning our second annual Big Dog Movie Night. It's a free movie night. We supply all the hot dogs for all the kids, bounce houses and everything, but we're gonna upgrade it. So we're looking to do that maybe August twenty-ninth. So I have to get some more details, but just to let you know, that's on the horizon. The second Big Dog Free Movie Night. And I'm willing to partner with anyone, the police department, the fire department, or any other organization that wants to partner. That's what we do. It's all about Inkster love. Thank you.
Now, Madam Clerk, you got anything?
As of June the twenty-fourth, we have started mailing out the permanent, the AB ballots. And as of today, we've mailed out three hundred and seventy-nine and we're still mailing out. So if you want to come in, if you haven't received your ballot or you want to come in and get on the permanent AB list, you can do that and also pick up your ballot on the site.
Councilwoman Richardson, what you got for us? I heard you got something.
You know what? So we're gonna have some beer. Okay, I did receive some information from, and was ordered some grants that are available. It came through, or she did to me. And I didn't receive, anybody see this thing? I'm gonna send that copy over to Commissioner Chia. And we have a lot of things on it, arts and humanities. There's a grant for that. There's a grant for economic community development. There's a grant also for employment labor. They have a grant here for the Bronx Field Job Training Grant. There's a grant, if you can see it, Environmental and Climate Justice Facility Change Grant Program. There's a grant here, there may be. There's a Justice and Security Program, Emmett Till case investigation and prosecution. They have that. So transportation, safe streets and roads are all funded. So and I'm gonna make sure that ETS get a copy and, if you have a copy, good. And a housing grant. Housing related, after, in that base, can happen for a couple. So there is a lot of things here and I just want to share it and make sure that we buy for these things here. Should we see, whether you get, or for, yes, if you get launched, I'm gonna make sure that you get more. So I just wanted to share that.
Throwing around money.
Hey, got fun and mom?
Councilwoman Hough.
Yes, I know I spoke some years ago about this school that's on Ananaples. That's an ISO. I'm not sure if you can get anybody to give us a grant or something, we're gonna tear down. I'm not sure.
We don't know. We actually were looking at discussing it actually today. There's land money available we're going to apply for.
Yeah, call on that. And also too, when, on the news last week or this week, you had Fisher Body Auto Plant Redevelopment. They got some investors to come in here and they're gonna redo it as a part. So maybe we can try to get something like that, you know, so we do, but it's an ISO. The grass is tall, it's, it's, it's bad. It's on Ananaples, the school on Ananaples. What is the name of that school?
What's the name?
Christian Academy.
So I'm gonna test it.
Bethlehem Temple Christian Academy. Okay, yeah, but it's been, it's been like that since, as long as I've been on council. So and I've been trying to figure out. The compensation board that you're trying to, maybe they can get something together and go down town and clear it.
Well, we can definitely.
Cause then, yeah, get it tall, get it tall down. Yeah. Okay. So that's, that's my mission. That's our mission.
We're on top of that. Somebody brought that up.
It's been out there, but it's, it's been out there. Nothing, I don't know if anything has happened with it. But I'm just wondering about, because I think we do cut the grass, correct?
We cut all the.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
See, y'all got to order, call us, drop me out immediately.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, but Councilwoman Rutledge.
Speaking of grants and money, we met with Freshwater, this week, there and a couple others. And if you need assistance with your water bill, there is money that is available, Wayne Metro. There is a three thousand dollar grant. They will be able to help a few. Also, there's nine thousand dollars available if you need funding. And my understanding is that this money is not just for people who are struggling with their bill, but if you need any assistance with your water bill. I encourage you to contact Wayne Metro. This has a QR code on it and it's all, it goes, it goes. Also, I just want to thank the police chief. I got a call from a resident in housing to do a wellness check on a resident. They went and did the wellness check, found out that the resident actually was in a house that was extremely hot. The officer, Officer Miles, actually went out and bought an air conditioner due to weather delay. So I mean, is that just the empathy that he had for that resident? I just want to say thank you for that.
Very brief, just kind of want to highlight what everyone else is saying, just important to getting out and voting. But also understanding that this is not only an election, but you also have our state rep on it as well. And I think Senator Paul Heaney showed us the power of representation, especially at the state level. We always want to elect people that are gonna go up there and fight for us. So just keep that in mind. Please get out and vote. The primary is August and then definitely get your young people out there to vote. So make those phone calls to gray kids or any friends or friends of friends. Let's encourage everyone to get out and vote this election. And also shop in Inkster.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would like to remind everyone that there is a master plan option online. Please visit the Inkster, City of Inkster's webpage and click the master plan engagement link. Take the survey, add ideas to the map, and highlight priority sites. Also, there's a workshop on July ninth in the City Council Chambers from four to seven. So that is, that's the part where all residents, that's not necessarily on the Board of Commission or anything like that, that can engage and give their insight on what they want the future of the city and the present state of the city to look like. We go back and forth about zoning and different things like that. This is your opportunity to engage. Please spread the word and make sure we'll be sending it out on co-read as well. Four to seven PM on July ninth, right here in the Inkster City Council Chambers. Again, I'll make sure we get that out on co-read as well. Perfect segue into co-read. Please sign up. Last meeting, we had two people came up after the meeting, got them signed up and got some more signed up over the weekend. So we're making progress slowly but surely. And as we see different faces in the crowd and more attendance at city council meetings and special meetings, it's refreshing. Because we know the word is getting out and the reminders are coming out and we look forward to those who haven't signed up yet to sign up. Also, right after the meeting, if everyone could just give us thirty seconds so we can take a group photo right here in front of the seals and don't run off. And residents, please just give us thirty seconds real quick, because, you know, we all engaged, but we want to get this picture out the way so we can move forward with that. And also, Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback on what Commissioner Butts has said for the Parks and Rec, I am a favorite of the walkie-talkie situation for the simple fact that when I walk into work every morning now, I actually grab one. And there's times where I'm in different parts of the building where I just can't get a cell reception. Or I might have sat my phone down and I need to make a call to the office or whatever the case may be, or some type of emergency just came out across the radio and I'm one of the first ones that can respond because I have my radio and I'm not trying to search for email or wondering, oh, what is this call I just? We know it's public safety, use those, but yes, in a building as such, and at times are changing. And I'm gonna just be honest with you guys. In the schools, the reason why they talk so much about not having the kids have cell phones in classrooms, there are a lot of different groups on social media and just in general in text messages. These kids are fighting verbally or textually, if you will, across these different platforms. And then sometimes it spawns in the school. You don't realize what's going on until it's too late. Or you get ready to dismiss and there's a whole squad in the parking lot waiting on something you didn't even know was broken. So even in that case, when we're doing dismissal and I'm at one end of the building, the admins in another spot and all the other faculty are different spots, those who have radios can be on high alert and can get the word back and forth to whomever they need and even the school resource officer. He's on the channel too. So we have a direct communication with the Huron Police Department. So it's, it's good, it's a good option to have and whatever we need to do to ensure the safety of our residents and our staff. I'm always in favor of that. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm gonna read this statement because it's a little long. On Saturday, the city received the completed FY twenty-three audit report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We have, we have our audit done. As you know, the administration has been working diligently the last several months to get this audit completed, which will initially, which was initially due on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. With the audit now complete, the city can continue moving forward with the planned water and sewer financing, which will allow the city to benefit from twenty million dollars in grants for much-needed repairs and improvements to the city's water and sewer infrastructure. We will work with our consultants and auditors to provide more details on the audit in the near future, but we wanted to provide a few key points from the audit. The general fund had a six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, I'm sorry, had six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars more in expenses than revenues for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This created a deficit for the general fund for FY twenty-three of six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Fund balance for the general fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three is negative three hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Due to this deficit, the city be required to file a deficit elimination plan with the state of Michigan. We'll be providing more information on this in the very near future. All other funds have positive fund balances and are in line with the city's policy. As stated, the administration is working to complete the curiously discussed financing for the water and sewer. Key item for this was getting the FY twenty-three audit complete. Now that we have the completed audit, we will need to move quickly in getting the DEP, the deficit elimination plan filed and approved by the state. Administration will be presenting a proposed DEP to the council in the next couple of weeks. Council will need to approve the DEP plan by the end of July so this plan can get submitted to the state for their approval. In closing, want to thank Allison Davis and June LeBret and the entire treasury team for their efforts in getting this audit complete, as well as the city's accounting consultants, Manner, Osterian. So we finally got it done, y'all. Oh, yeah, him too. And Dan Carrington also, who was working as a consultant on behalf to get this pushed through, because we don't currently have a treasurer. Soon. Stay tuned. So we finally got it done. We're gonna take about two weeks to regroup and then we're gonna start on last year's.
Are we, are they gonna come to the, are they gonna, the auditor's gonna come and give us that?
Yeah, they'll come present it. Yeah. So they'll come and give the formal presentation and we can, you know, get all the details of the audit. I'm actually, you know, kind of happy it is not any worse than what it is. I was thinking the deficit was gonna be bigger, but since we've been working to get the reimbursements done over the last year, Sardane's been doing that diligently. We've kind of all that money we were in deficit of last year, we received a lot of that money now that we've got the reimbursements. So this number is rather small compared to what we were told last year. So I'm happy about that and excited. We're gonna get back on track with our financials. As well as getting this extra money, extra money from the state is not gonna hurt anything. So it's a good thing for us. Also, I want to announce, don't forget the Cisterc picnic is gonna be July fourteenth, Sunday, July fourteenth this year. It's usually in June, so people might think we already had it, but it's gonna be on July fourteenth at Inkster Park. We start at about three and go till everybody goes home. So make sure you come out. It's a great event. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the presidential debate. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the presidential debate that I watched last week. Now, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of different things I took from that, but the one kind of funny thing, because I had to keep him crying after watching it. The former president said that he created more black jobs than the current president. I don't know what a black job is. So I just want to ask y'all, do you know where it's at? Can we get some of the money? I was sitting out scratching my head, I thought about it, it's like, wait a minute, a black job? What's a black job? And then I thought about it, I hope it ain't the jobs he's talking about we have for the emancipation proclamation. I don't, I don't want those jobs. But we got to laugh, it was not great. But, you know, we got to move forward and, and, and stay strong. Yeah, it was, it was rough, it was rough. But I'm glad you guys all came to the meeting. Enjoy your July 4th holiday, even though I'm questioning why we celebrate July 4th, because obviously we went out free when they started, but we're going to eat anyway, so we might as well eat on Thursday. Oh, I'm sorry, city hall is closed on Friday, so don't come up here and try to pay your bill. We're not going to be here, we're going to still be eating leftovers on Thursday. All right, y'all got anything else? We have a motion to adjourn, something? Probably move to second discussion, are those fair to say? Well, it was negative.
I'm not looking.
Got it down at 53.
Going to my drawer.
Hey, Troy, can I flash this picture?
Oh, yeah.